Okay, it is 6:30 PM and we will call the city council meeting on Tuesday, June 4th to order. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Counselor Evers absent. Counselor Holland?
Here.
Counselor Wheel?
Happy to be here.
Counselor Sheldon?
Here.
Counselor Blum is absent. Counselor McGuire?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will have our audience participation. Just for anyone who may not have participated in these meetings before, just so that you know how this works, we call people in order that they have signed up. If you did not get a chance to sign up and would like to speak, you can still do so in the back of the room. There's a time limit of five minutes per speaker. And we ask that the attendees must not interfere with the orderly function of the meeting. And if it's a public hearing, which we don't have any this evening, testimony is limited to the subject of that hearing. So we will start with Mr. Keith Bierman. So you come up to the front, state your name and address for the record, and then you have five minutes. Thank you.
Keith Bierman, 5430 Nassau Circle East. We've been in the village for about 15 years, and until my retirement, I was a principal network engineer. I cannot claim to be an expert on cells, but I can't complain, I can't deign or feign to be completely ignorant either. I would like to urge the council to not proceed to put the proposal on the ballot in November. There are only two obvious outcomes, both of which I think are poor. One is it wins by less than unanimous consent. And whether that's 51% I or 90% I, the people who are disenfranchised will be really, really irritated. We can see that from the folks that are still complaining about the overhead wires on Quincy, whatever it is, multiple decades later. So that would be bad. The alternative, that it fails, will then just be used as a reason for not going ahead and doing anything. I don't think either of those are really good outcomes. I think we can find other solutions, not as good, not giving all of the things that people said they wanted. But the perfection is the enemy of the good, and we just need better than what we have now, not outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Linda Carney. Again, just come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Linda Carney at 5411 Nassau Circle East. Okay, so I'm also talking about the ballot proposal. And I also think that it should not be on this ballot for a few reasons. I think I'm pretty much like your average person that's gonna not really know what's going on, but there it'll be on the ballot. And it's either a yes or no on it. And as I understand it, there isn't going to be anything that explains it with a pro and con or a for and against because of these reasons. It's just what it is. And I don't think that people will understand, a lot of people, okay, we've got, now we've got an answer for cell phones, but they aren't going to be able to take it beyond that. There will be so many other major things on this ballot. This is gonna be lost. And I think it's important that, that people know and understand what they're really voting for. And I don't believe that people will understand. This is, okay, this is the answer. Good, well, let's, now we're gonna have better cellphone service. That's not just all that it is, as Keith mentioned. There are other parts to it. There's the fact that a hundred-foot tower is gigantic and ugly. And maybe we don't have to solve the problem as well as it can be solved. Maybe we can come to some other solution. But I strongly think it shouldn't be on this ballot because I don't think it's, it's going to be understood if it isn't explained. And being explained through the website is, I don't, I don't look at the website. I don't know how many people get their information that way. I don't think people will see that if there's an explanation that way. There's gotta be another way to let people know. And since you can't do a for and against or pros and cons, that's, that's why I think it shouldn't be on the ballot now. We've gone an awful long time with cellphone service as it is. We can go another while before we get it really set. That's it.
Thank you. Next is Jim, is it Green? Yep, Jim Green.
Yeah, hi, everybody. Jim Green. I'm at 2855 Cherry Ridge Road. Lived in the village about 30 years now. And I too agree with the previous speakers that I really wanna strongly encourage for this initiative to not be on the ballot this coming November. As was mentioned, you know, there really isn't anything in the form of like the blue book that we see with the, with the pros and cons. And as I understand it from the focus group, the main voting element will be to extend the lease on the city's property versus, you know, that, all, all that goes into constructing hundred-foot towers. I mean, if we had more time, we could walk outside and look at the flagpole, which is, you know, conceals the antennas inside of it. Very sleek, isn't very obvious what it is. And that's 40 foot, as I understand, 40 feet, excuse me. Is I, so what will be installed is two and a half times what we see out there. Not to mention the infrastructure that needs to be there. There's a lot of power that's needed and a lot of the peripheral equipment, backup generators, et cetera, that would also need to be placed in, on the city property. So it's not just, you know, a tower, it's a lot of infrastructure that goes with it. And personally, having been in telecom since 1984, I started post-divestiture. I worked in the wholesale side of the business for Level 3 Global Crossing Sprint, as well as WOW, a local, local cable company here. And I saw a lot of, you know, fiber to the tower and did a lot of that. And I just think, the hundred-foot tower, I saw two instances, Sprint and US Cellular trying to do it. And they abandoned it after, you know, two towers, in the case of Sprint, were constructed in Chicago and there was a major upheaval, upheaval in the neighborhood, just because of the aesthetics. But also, it really isn't gonna future-proof whatever's gonna be on the towers. You know, this is a rapidly changing industry. You know, 5G is here today. In 20 years, if that's, that's how long the tower lease is gonna last, you know, it's just gonna be something else. And I think there's potential that the city on their property, you know, may end up with a hundred-foot tower that's there with basically no use. And like I joked with my wife, much like liquor stores, you don't see them closing. You don't see a lot of people taking down hundred-foot towers. So it may, it may cause in the future quite an expense for the city to, you know, to maintain that and even keep it. So that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Tori Levitin.
Good evening, Tori Levitin, 3901 East Quincy Avenue. I'm gonna go backwards. Everyone is invited to a community event. There's actually gonna, I'm gonna try for two weeks in mid-July. It's gonna be July 20th and July 27th at 5 o'clock here at John Mead. I am so busy this month that I don't know what those events are gonna look like. It's gonna be more than just me sitting at the keyboard. But I don't know what the other details are, or how long it's gonna last. Does a rain check, anything like that. But the reason I'm so busy is because I've been in the Denver Gay Men's Chorus since January. So happy Pride to any of those who care. I'm coming out for those who are unable to or persecuted for doing, doing so. We have a show on June 17th at DU, at the Newman Center, at 7:30 PM for Denver Gay Men's Chorus. It's the Denver Kickoff to Pride Concert. It's gonna be really good. We've been working really hard on that. Also, I'm performing at a queer space called Charlie's Denver on Colfax for the remainder of the Sundays in June, from 3 to 6 PM on Sunday afternoon. It's a Dizzy Fingers Cabaret style. There's gonna be, it's through Father's Day as well as that June 23rd of Pride Weekend. And it's a public space, and all queers and allies are free to join. So, thank you. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Next up is John?
My apologies.
Fitzhugh? That's all right. John Fitzhugh, I was, I was about to guess that, but it's not a good, so next up is John Fitzhugh. Please come up. Oh, just for the meeting. Okay. Thank you. Next is Josh Baer.
Everyone tonight, thank you for this afternoon, whatever it is. Thanks for having me, Dan. Appreciate you guys. As we kick things off, I know it's been kind of a, maybe a whirlwind back and forth between the two focus groups that were done. And I appreciate you guys, including me, in that first focus group, or I guess the second one. I think tonight, I too am concerned about the cellphone towers. Not so much because the argument isn't there for cellphone towers. I think certainly in some capacity it is. I think it's more the concern around, has enough diligence been done in order to stress-test all the options? And in my conversations with the number of folks, it sounds like some diligence has been done around what would take cellphone connectivity from what it is to ideal? And not so much around from what it is to good enough. And I think, you know, perfection is the enemy of good. I think that certainly is an apt statement tonight. I think that, you know, I've spoken with Dan on multiple occasions. And I guess my concern simply is, we live in this village, and what makes it so special is that we have this rural feel. These beautiful parks, you know, this, this area that we're 15 minutes from Cherry Creek. And we can have these spaces that have nature and they're, you know, untouched. And that's something that we all try to cherish and really hang on to. And I think it's in our building code, and everything that we do here in the village is around that idea. And the concept of having three 100-foot towers with 50 feet of fencing around the towers just to make sure we don't have any dropped calls in the city feels absolutely asinine to me. I think it seems like pure lunacy. You know, as I was speaking with Dan yesterday about this, my, I'm in the real estate business. My cellphone coverage is better today than it was 10 years ago. 10 years ago, I would drive through the city and I would drop calls left and right. Today, I do have dead spots on Quincy and a number of other locations, and Cherry Hills Farm, you know, it's like, I don't know what goes on there. But I can tell you that I certainly don't think that serves as a catalyst for the, you know, albeit a solution. But is it the right solution with these three 100-foot towers defacing our parks in the city of Cherry Hills? And frankly, potentially ruining that. And I think there is an unintended consequence here, which is, as we've discussed, hundreds of people, I believe, were surveyed. And this was one of the biggest issues in our village when you guys were looking at the master plan. And again, it's not lost on me that you guys are doing this on a volunteer basis, and truly appreciate all the work you guys do. So knowing that, the question I would pose, and it's rhetorical, is have we considered putting the cellphone towers along the rights-of-way? Have we considered replacing the existing Crown Castle 40-foot tower with a 100-foot tower? What would these alternative solutions do to solve or get us, you know, progressively closer to solving this cellphone issue? So that maybe the hundreds of people, you know, are, are less inconvenienced. And then our, our city of 6,000 doesn't walk to their rural parks that they so cherish. And part of the reason why they've moved here from the city or from wherever are, you know, veritably ruined because of these cellphone towers. So I guess what I would ask all of you is consider, do we engage this engineer, this consultant, to look at some of these alternative options? And do we do that before we put this on the ballot? Because I do think, again, if, as it was said, if we put on the ballot, do you want to better your cellphone coverage? I think it's gonna pass with overwhelming, you know, by an overwhelming margin. And I think unfortunately, they're posed as a risk for the city, and I don't know this has been considered either, to have the unintended consequence of, what if they're not as safe as maybe we all think they are? What if somebody feels like their real estate values have dropped precipitously because of these towers? What if the city gets sued? What if there's some other issue that's born from this that we haven't quite considered? Just to solve the problem of dropped calls here and there. So again, I would ask all of you to consider, do we re-engage these consultants? Do we push this out six months or a year? Do we keep the momentum going? You know, again, you know, I'm not, I don't wanna be a thorn in the side of the, the village here. But I think it would be prudent for all of us to consider that, to push this down, to do more research, to figure more things out, and then solve the problem in the most accretive way possible, and maybe at the least expense of the city. Thank you all.
Thank you. And then finally is Laura Crispin.
Evening, Laura Crispin, 18 Cherry Lane Drive, A on cell towers. First thing is, if there is a proposed amendment to the charter, I will vehemently oppose it. I don't care what it says. If it deals with our parks and trails, our people, our folks pass that by 83%. And I, and we put in the charter that things can go to a vote, so you don't need to amend it. And I don't want the unintended consequences of amending that charter to come back and bite us, or bite the citizens. So that's the first thing. The second thing is a story. I took my grandchild to Mount Rainier National Park last week. That is an old growth forest. Mount Rainier is 14,000 square feet. It's a national forest. They gave me all this information, how there is no cell coverage, there's no Wi-Fi, there's nothing. If you get lost, have a good time, because there's snow, we may find you, we may not. Much to my amazement, I had three bars. I had one drop call the entire time I was there. I had three bars going through a forest that is well over 100 feet. These trees packed, I mean, trees everywhere. Going up to Mount Rainier at the, at the top, didn't see any 100-foot towers up there. And I had actually good cell coverage at Mount Rainier National Park. I went down, and we went hiking, and I had cell coverage. I went down to the Forest Service and asked them. I, I said, you know, you tell everybody you have no service. And they said, well, you know, depending on your carrier, you may not have service. We don't guarantee service. We don't have anything to do with service. I said, do you have any 100-foot towers? Do you have any 70-foot towers? Do you have any towers? And they said, we wouldn't put towers in a national forest. So my thoughts here is, there's something missing. If I can get three bars hiking in the middle of nowhere with super tall trees, then we should be able to maybe do something else, or at least explore it. Why are other communities getting service when we are not? Why is the national forest getting service? So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I didn't mention this before, but if you haven't participated this way before, this is unfortunately not a dialogue. It's your opportunity to speak to the council. And the reason for that is that public meeting, open meetings laws require us to publish our agenda in advance so that people know what we'll be discussing. So we can't really engage in a discussion with the audience on a kind of ad hoc basis. So we can't really engage in a discussion with the audience on a kind of ad hoc basis. But I would, there is an update on our cellphone coverage on the agenda tonight. So I would invite, if that's your interest, would invite you to stay. It's soon, so you won't have to stay long, and it's gonna be a short meeting anyway. But I apologize if you were expecting us to engage in a conversation with you. We're not able to do that. So that is, is there anyone else in the audience who wanted to say something and didn't have a chance? Reports from members of city boards and commissions. I don't see any here. The consent agenda.
I'd like to remove item 6B.
Item 6B is removed?
Move to approve the consent agenda, item 6A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Item 6B, Councilor Holen.
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to do is just, you know, when we, when we get a, we've done this from the past, is that when we get a donation, it's nice to be able to call it out in the public meeting and basically thank the individual for doing it. So I just wanted to pull it out for that matter and maybe have the presentation made and we could then all vote on it.
Thank you. Manager Black.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Yes, so this item is a bench donation from Beverly Henry Fullerton in memory of her husband, Honorable Robert P. Fullerton. So she has asked for a bench to be located in John Mead Park, right out here next to the splash area. She chose that location with our Parks Operations Supervisor recently. I won't read, I have in your packets, kind of a summary of their family's history in the village. They have a long history in the village and have really enjoyed their time here. So she has asked that the bench have both of their names on it. And that inscription is also in your packets. The Parks Commission recommended approval of the donation at their May 9th meeting. So I'm happy to answer any questions council has.
Thank you. Any questions or other comments? Councilor Eber?
Quick comment, and that is just, I was pleased to see that Judge, former Judge Fullerton was a longtime resident. I wanted to share with the group that we had a chance that he actually married my sister back many, many years ago. And it was a long time ago that we had a, a good acquaintanceship with him. And, you know, he was quite an attorney here in town with a highly regarded reputation, not only for his judicial skills, but also for his legal knowledge and temperament. So it's, I just wanted to mention that on the record. Thank his family, thank his application, and certainly we'll vote on it in just a moment.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Move to approve Resolution 9, Series 2024, accepting a bench donation in memory of Honorable Robert P. Fullerton.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously, and thank you very much for the generosity of the Fullerton family. Next, we will move to unfinished business, which is item 8A, which is a cellphone coverage update. City Manager Thorson.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. And I'd just like to thank the public for coming here and speaking on this issue. What I would like to do tonight is provide city council and our residents a little background about the cell study, what we've accomplished to date, and where we are headed in the near future. So for background, back in 2022, two years ago, the city completed an update to our master plan. As part of that master plan process, a community survey was conducted. Residents expressed that poor cell service coverage was a primary concern affecting potentially their safety and the quality of life here in the village. Therefore, the master plan now contains a new task, which is to have the city consider a feasible strategy to improve cell coverage around the city. So we often get asked, why do we have poor cell coverage? And it's really quite simple. The reason we have poor cell service is due to the lack of sufficient antennas within the village to transmit signals. It's as simple as that. Historically, carriers have been reluctant to invest any amount of money to provide better coverage due to our low densities and limited number of users. In addition, carriers have stated there is insufficient right-of-way for their equipment and the pole heights have been restricted here in the village. So what are we doing to tackle this poor cell coverage problem? Well, in order to potentially improve cell service here in the village, we started with four primary goals. The first was to establish a baseline cell coverage that benefits the entire city and not just portions of the city. Second, we want to improve the cell coverage without having any tax increase to the residents and minimize the necessary government spending to assist private carriers. Three, we wanted to minimize the investment by the carriers so that they would have incentive to invest in a complete coverage plan for the village. And then finally, we wanted to provide a turnkey solution that is entirely within the city's ability and authority to execute. And what I mean by that is we do not want to rely on having to negotiate with private property owners to complete this project. So in 2023, the city placed out a request for proposals to consulting experts in the telecommunications industry. We received four proposals back. We vetted those. We chose a consultant by the name of H.R. Green to lead the study and determine the extent of the existing cellphone coverage, identify limiting issues, and also to develop possible solutions. H.R. Green undertook an extensive review of our cellular conditions and our fiber conditions. They used state-of-the-art radio frequency, as they call it, RF, design tools to create a robust model of the current cellular coverage in the community. As one would expect, the model clearly showed that the city had many gaps in our coverage. And you constantly experience that when you drive around town. H.R. Green then collected widespread public input that included an online GIS-based survey in a city charrette. It is noted that much of the citizen input collected mirrored the information that they had gathered on their own, which is the lack of cell service in many locations. H.R. Green then began to develop conceptual solutions along with cost estimates for pole construction, fiber extension, as well as identifying best site locations to minimize the number of poles that might be needed. These solutions required additional RF modeling to ensure that the city, entire city, would be covered for cell reception. So what does that solution look like? Well, after looking at many options, it became clear that most, the most efficient, cost-effective solution that had the greatest chance of success was the three-poles, 100-foot solution in our city parks. The three parks that were chosen included Woody Hollow, Three Pond, and City Park, which is catty-corner to this location. And the reason this solution was chosen was for several reasons. First of all, it provided the best baseline cell coverage for the entire city with, would allow for the latest 5G technology and allows for future upgrades. Second, it does not require any tax increase to our residents and only minimal government spending. In fact, over time, the lease revenue that we would receive would repay any funds the city spent to complete the study as well as any initial project costs that we might endure. Third, it limits the carriers' investment to three locations. This is really critical in our discussions with the carriers. Limiting the number of poles limits their costs and certainly will make their decision to participate in the project a whole lot easier. The more poles, the more cost to the carriers, the less likely they're going to want to come into the city and put in their cellular antennas. Obviously, more poles, more costs, less likely to participate. And then finally, the city can complete this project within its own right-of-way, does not need to negotiate land leases with private property owners. We know private property land leases, negotiations could significantly delay or even stop the project completely if we had to do those. So what other solutions were evaluated and why were they not chosen? So our consultant, H.R. Green, they looked at 140-foot poles. And obviously, those are tall poles. They looked at 70-foot poles, and they also looked at what they call small cells, which are usually about 35 to 45 feet in height. The 140-foot poles required a minimum of three poles anyway. So the cost for those actually would go up, and they're actually more expensive and intrusive than the 100-foot poles. The 70-foot poles we looked at would require probably in the neighborhood of eight to 10 poles to get the same baseline coverage as a three-pole 100-foot system. Therefore, it is significantly more expensive and require more land leases, and it will less likely, we will be able to get the carriers to participate on joining four to five poles instead of three. The small cell solution, which we looked at, which is the 35 to 45-foot poles, and you see them around several other areas, would require somewhere between 50 to 100 of those poles throughout the village and would again be significantly more expensive and is really unlikely that the carriers would support this approach. With that in mind, the only true option that met our four goals for the city was the three-pole solution within our existing city parks. So what are the next steps for the city now that we know this? With a potential solution in hand, the city has now retained a public relations firm of Blakely &amp; Company. They're developing a media outreach campaign that will be forthcoming over the next 10 weeks. The outreach is to inform our residents about the potential solution and the required steps to proceed. The outreach includes, among the following, conducting stakeholders and focus group meetings, which they've already completed that over the last couple of weeks. Mr. Blakely will be making presentations about the project at the upcoming PTRC meeting and the PNZ meeting. They're going to complete city website update by the end of this week. That website update will include, among other things, a quick, one-page, easy-to-read summary of the issues. There will be a Crier article that will be placed in the July issue. Social media outreach to include Facebook and Nextdoor. A press release will be sent to The Villager. A mailer will be sent to every household in the village. At least one town hall, public meeting, and perhaps two. And finally, we're planning on placing at least a balloon or two out in the village to show everybody what the heights would be if we did place the 100-foot towers. Finally, the city council expressed that it is important for our residents to determine whether installing the 300-foot poles in our parks is a preferable solution. It's anticipated that as part of the upcoming national election in November, we'll be placing a city question on the ballot that will be in conformance with our city charter. We're not asking for a charter amendment. We're asking for, that this is going to be in conformance with the city charter. And we want to know what the residents think. The ballot language would allow residents to vote on whether the city council should approve a long-term lease up to 20 years for our parks that is currently restricted to a maximum of five years. Should the ballot language be supported by the residents, the city would finalize a contract with a neutral host. That's what they call them. And that's a third-party contractor that would then design the poles and fiber extensions to meet our, to meet this city and our carrier requirements. The neutral host will also contract directly with the carriers to lease space on the poles. And that's how they get their return on their investment. It would be noted that there will be no pole construction until a minimum of two and maybe even three major carriers have signed agreements to place equipment and antennas on the poles. So we're not gonna build them unless we know for sure the carriers are there. Should the ballot language not be supported, the city would cease finding a solution at this time and leave any cellular upgrades to the private carriers. It was mentioned that the technology may change. And I just wanted to state that as part of our lease agreement, we would require, if the poles are no longer in use, the neutral host would have to take those down within a set period of time. And with that, that's my update on the current status of our cellular study. And both Jay Goldie and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. And before I'll open it up to questions, the council, I just wanted to add to that that a very important distinction is that the outreach effort that will be make, be made is purely informative. The city and city council as an entity will not be advocating one way or another. This is solely a question for the residents of Cherry Hills Village. So with that said, are there questions? Councilor Holen?
And just to follow up on that, and during, very good presentation, by the way, Jim, appreciate that. You'd use the word, "we've chosen this option." And then you did say potential solution. The point is, chosen to investigate, to gather information so that we could, A, the city could figure out what does it need to do to implement, but also to have information that it could present in detail to the public. That's what the choice was about, right?
Yeah, the choice was to find the optimal solution.
Right, but that, but the choice then to pursue that, to gain the information necessary to be able to plan appropriately from a city perspective, but to provide information to the public. Without following through with a chosen solution, you don't have the information to give the people.
You're right.
Your point is, we haven't chosen to implement that solution.
Exactly, and so... Exactly, which is where I was gonna go next, which is what Katie was talking about, which is, council hasn't decided to do anything in terms of implementing this solution other than to proceed, to gather the information necessary to ultimately be in a position to do, if it was ultimately approved by the people, once they got the information necessary to have an informed decision during a vote.
That's correct. And it'll be a big push to put it out in the next 10 weeks of all the information we've gathered to date and the reason a particular solution was identified.
I appreciate that. And I also, I think, and you did a really, really good job of laying out the timeline, but also, and I appreciate this update, but this wasn't the first update that you've provided to council on this. They have been regular updates over the last, certainly year, year and a half associated with this particular thing in this chamber.
Right. That is correct.
Thank you.
Councilor Eber?
Wanted to see if, in light of the fact that many people are now a little bit more focused on what we've been doing as a result of some of the focus events and some of the publicity that's been, and discussions that have been going around. Tonight's public comment seems to indicate to me that people are still questioning our scoping process of whether or not we were able to look at all of the alternatives that are out there. Now, yes, you mentioned that there are some priorities and four general factors that we tried to emphasize, and you mentioned those in your presentation. But can you spend a couple of minutes more so that it's on the record of how we considered other options? I mean, you mentioned the number of poles is more money, more, more risk for carriers. But other technologies that we maybe considered are, you know, the idea of what we heard about the lifespan before towers go out of vogue or out of service? Or, you know, sort of give the, the idea that we can talk a little bit about some of the other alternatives that we looked at and rejected for whatever reasons. And I am catching you off-guard and unprepared to go back through...
No, no, no. That's fine. I was thinking, can I do it in two minutes? It's a complicated question.
Everybody here will give you a three.
Well, well, first, you know, technology, I think it was identified that it could... that it could change, and certainly it could. The experts we've been dealing with have told us that the towers would certainly be here for 20 years and maybe much longer. The 5G, maybe it turns into 6G or some other technology, but the towers would still be useful for that purpose. They didn't see the technology changing so drastically that they think the towers would disappear and not be used. And as I mentioned before, if that did happen, we would have clauses in our agreement to get rid of those towers. Second, I think other solutions, how did we vet those out? You know, and when I started looking at this, it seemed like there was an infinite number of solutions out there. And then as we got into the study itself and talking to the experts, there really was some limitations placed. You're either looking at a macro, which are the taller towers, or a micro, which are the smaller towers. The micro, you have to bring a lot of fiber in throughout the city. All the streets would be dug up and all the fiber would need to be placed. Very expensive in addition to the 50 to 100 micro sites, which is the towers would be, the 35 to 45-foot poles would be. That cost is really exorbitant and doesn't meet the city's budget. It wouldn't meet the carriers' budget. And the return on the investments for the carriers would be low. And it was recognized pretty quickly that that wasn't a solution for the city. The other height for a macro that was really looked at hard was the 70-foot. 70-foot allows for two carriers to be on it, not four, as the 100-foot does, which means you need at least twice the number of poles because we have four carriers that would be out of sight. Therefore, at each location, even if we had a little bit less coverage, you would need a minimum six, but probably 10 poles total to get coverage for the entire city at an acceptable, good level. The additional poles at 70 feet, they do have limitations and the coverage isn't as good because of the tree canopy in this town. That's why the 100-foot is preferred by the carriers. It gives a clear distance for most all the signal receiving and sending. So 70-foot towers, you know, at the end of the day, could you do a solution with that? Yes, but I'm not even sure the carriers would come because I'm not sure they would want to get on the 70-foot towers, especially if you're the second one on the tower at 60 feet. You really have limitations and you may end up having additional towers, even above the 10, to get full service to the city. So finding places for those towers and any necessary equipment is also problematic. You may have to go onto private property. You may have to go into some other open space areas that haven't been identified with the three-tower solution. So there was quite a bit of effort put into that. And I just, hopefully that answers your question.
And the reason that I really asked it, I mean, we've spent an awful lot of discussion, as Councilmember Holland said. We've already been through this a number of times. But I wanted to, because we had eight or 10 people here tonight who were asking and saying that maybe we need to look at this a little more or think of whether there are other technologies, other means, other ways to do this. I wanted to try and elicit a response that we tried to anticipate some of those type of questions. And frankly, to satisfy our own curiosities of whether or not there was another way that we were missing was really out there. And we thought we were pretty comprehensive in giving a very broad directive to the consultant to provide us the fixes in whatever way with very little direction to start with other than the four parameters that you mentioned up front. But we didn't indicate we prefer towers. We didn't indicate we prefer, you know, whatever it was. We said, you tell us the technological fix. We'll take it to the city and we will talk about whether or not the city is interested in implementing a fix that we think is the best fix of the technologies and based on the four criteria, again, that works. And again, as Councilman Holland and other members have said, we're not endorsing yes or no on this vote, but we've done what we hope is a pretty exhaustive search. And we want to make sure that people are comfortable with that so that they can then understand at least that we have thought through all of the issues before we're presenting it.
And to follow up on that, I believe at our public open house that we're planning to have, maybe it's late June or sometime in July, it's anticipated we're going to bring in our experts. One of the experts is a gentleman by the name of Perry. He's actually a subconsultant to H.R. Green. And his knowledge about the different types of services that are available, the cell sites that will meet our needs is extensive, well-known throughout the industry, not only in the U.S., but across the seas. So I believe, and we gave them an open book. We didn't direct how we wanted this achieved. We just wanted it achieved and give us a solution that makes some sense. And so this is their product that they brought before us. And certainly, they could explain it probably a lot better than I can.
And I just wanted to add to that that the initial path, I wouldn't say that we got to a decision point per se, but the initial path really was more of an extensive fiber backbone, more frequent, smaller cells. And I don't remember the cost. I'm sure it was discussed in a public meeting. I know it's out there somewhere. And I don't want to throw out a wildly inaccurate number, but it was out of the question. The cost was out of the question. So that, we did have that conversation at a council meeting with the consultants to basically say, that's not going to work. And that was the point at which then other solutions started to get more focus, I guess is what I would say. We looked at just doing towers on the perimeter of the city. All kinds of solutions.
And the other thing to that, to that cost, which was way out of the question, and you mentioned it in your update, that one of the goals was, you know, without any cost or tax increase to the city. And that goal came from the input that was brought in by the master plan. That was the input that was brought in by the public, which we had quite a bit of it in terms of saying, I mean, everybody wants everything. The cellphone improvement, that's the thing that we've heard about, that this council, previous councils have heard year in and year out, why aren't you doing something about the cellphone? And in the last master plan, which I was involved in when I was on P&amp;Z, which was, and let's ask them if they're willing to pay for it. And that answer came back resoundingly, no. Get out there and find something that improves cellphone service without anything. And the alternatives that you're looking at actually are alternatives that the city could have considered from a financing standpoint, but aren't. You pushed it along that we won't have to do anything. But what you were talking about, Mayor, was, I mean, you know, something that.
There are a lot of other options that don't meet that criteria.
$20, $30 million. I mean, that's not even within the realm of what I'm talking about in that the input, the public input from the master plan was talking about. So I think that's an important point, too, of where that second goal came from.
That's exactly right.
Okay, Mayor Protim, did you have a question?
I just wanted to add, first of all, thanks again, Jim, for the update. And thank you, all the residents who have taken the time to come here and express yourselves. It's not infrequent at times that, you know, one wonders what the residents are thinking. And so we've taken moves to try and understand what the thoughts are on this situation. My mind is wide open. I'm not pro or con. This is representative government issue as far as I'm concerned. It's a complex issue, and I hear you saying that to us. And I knew that from some of my work experience as well. You push in on this variable and one other, another variable pops out. So it becomes a little difficult to optimize and come up with a workable solution, something that people will implement, benefit from all of that. So I'm committed, and I think everybody else is, to doing our best to inform. It is a complicated decision, and that makes it challenging. But at the same time, I think it's understandable and we'll do our best to inform and then want to hear what the thoughts are from the public. And about the best way to do that is to take a vote. So, you know, that's kind of what got us headed down the path that we were headed down. I mean, aside from the optimization and other things, it wasn't, let's just sit here as a city council and start making some decisions and hope it all comes out all right. So we look forward to continuing the dialogue and coming to a solution that serves the majority well and works as doable.
Thanks. Other comments? Counselor McGuire.
I just wanted to express my thanks for people coming in and giving us their perspectives on this. I think it is a, you know, 100-foot tower is something that's going to generate a lot of discussion. But I think we were told rather emphatically in the master plan that this is an issue that people want addressed. And I think we've spent a lot of time and effort in trying to find a solution that works within the construct of not raising taxes, which is a difficult way to solve the problem, but I think the right way in this situation. So I do thank you, and I agree. I think we all want to make sure that we make every effort to get information out that's good information about what the issue is. And that's probably, I think, the most important thing.
Counselor Sheldon.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for coming. And the council was tasked with coming up with a handful of names per council member to recommend to staff to put onto these focus groups. And I don't know that everyone's names that were presented showed up. But for those of you that did or that have heard about it from your friends or your neighbors, thank you. And thank you for being involved in it and taking the time out of your days to be involved and be active in discussing this topic. It's obviously an important one, and I'm not going to reiterate anything the rest of council said or that you all have said. I get it. It's an interesting, difficult issue to figure out. We did, just to touch on that master planning process, we touched hundreds of people during the master plan, hundreds and hundreds, between our various in-house charrettes we did in this room and then having website questions that went out and mailers that went out. We got to a lot of our community. And this was the single largest, most important topic to our community, to fix. Whether or not, at the end of the day, this is a solution that same community that said we want it fixed wants this solution, that we're going to go see if it works in November. If we get to the point where we get it on the ballot, we're going to listen to our residents. We are not going to push this through. It's too big of a decision for us to decide on by ourselves. But we have tried very hard to do the right thing by the city. And that's tricky when it gets to impacting those who are either geographically close to the sites that we're talking about, these towers going in, or are parks fans that are in our parks or trails or the canal, whatever it may be. Those people who get touched by that more are going to probably have a stronger feeling about this topic. And I totally get that and I respect that. And I wish I could make it right. And I wish I could make them 30-foot towers that look like trees instead of 100-foot towers that look like poles and still have them operate the same way and yet still not charge our taxpayers a new mill levy. But those two things, all those things don't match up. So at the end of the day, we hope that over the next couple of months, there's enough public outreach whereby we touch every one of our residents. And we do it in the form of social media or in-person meetings or the mailers or the crier or the Villager or whatever method we get out there. We want the community to know about this. I would like to know that every one of our citizens who knows how to read or understand this has heard about it by the time we get to November. That's our goal. And at that point, we're going to leave it up to the citizens to decide because we may be way off base. And this may be, this may be something that citizens do not want to sacrifice. And that's perfectly fine. I think you'd hear us all say, great, you spoke. We're putting this thing on the shelf or not even in the shelf. We're putting it in the recycle bin or trash. But we need to get to that point where we need to have that dialogue with the community and we need to go see what happens at that time when we take it out. So please be educated, talk to your neighbors, get involved, show up, talk to us, call us, email us. We're all available for phone calls and discussions and meetings. We want to hear from you on this topic. So thank you again for participating and please stay tuned.
And Mayor, one comment that, picking up on Counselor Sheldon and a couple of other things, and it was a comment that was made, I think by Mr. Biermann at one point. But one thing we might want to think about, we don't have to do anything, but think about is that when we're, and if it does, if we move ahead and it goes to a vote, do we want it to be just a simple majority? Or do we want it to be a 55% vote or a 60% vote? That actually, that resonated with me. And I thought, that's worthy of consideration. And again, we may decide not to do anything about that. But that made sense to me as something to put into when we're making the decisions about when and if we move forward with the vote. I thought that was a good idea.
To consider.
And if I may, Mayor.
Yeah, Counselor Sheldon.
One other thing. I don't know what the rules are around ballot language. We don't do this very often. And we're going to be looking to our professionals. Even though we have these professionals in the room, we have additional outsourced professionals who help us through that ballot-writing stuff. But I don't think it's something that you just write, here are the pros and four bullet points, and here are the cons and four bullet points. I don't know that you can actually do it so simply in a ballot question. But we will endeavor to make the ballot question as meaningful and yet easy to read, unlike many, most ballot questions, which are very difficult to read and understand. We're going to try to, if we get this far, we will try to make this a reasonable ballot question that everyone can understand.
And I think there is, I think Mr. Thorson mentioned that there is a plan, if we proceed down this path, to do a mailing to the entire village. And I think the vision is that that would be the concept of the blue book, right? These are the pros, these are the cons. There are absolutely cons. Those are fair opinions because what, and we would be required to get a vote of the people because of the charter. But even if it weren't required for that reason, the council has been moving in that direction anyway because we don't want to base this decision on the 20 people who happened to see the meeting notice and happened to show up and had, right? We really want to know. And the voter turnout in Cherry Hills Village thankfully is extremely high. I think we will have some degree of confidence if there is a ballot question that we have really gotten the vast majority of citizens to weigh in. Because as people have mentioned, even in meetings where we've gotten hundreds of people, there are 6,000 people in the village. So even if we heard, had a room full of 100 people here saying one way or another, that still isn't exactly an accurate representation necessarily of where the community is on the issue. So the whole point of the process that we've gotten to, we know that if we went out and said, do you want us to improve cellphone coverage? It would, every, well, not, somebody would say no. I'm sure somebody would say no. But the vast majority of people would say yes. The whole point of this process is to then say, okay, do you want us to improve cellphone coverage if it means 100-foot towers? Do you want us to improve cellphone? Do you want us to improve cellphone coverage, you know, if it means cost to the citizens or not cost to? So that's where all those parameters went around. We don't feel that we can ask people and get a reasonable answer without explaining what that means. And so that will be the entire purpose of the next however many months, is to explain to people, you said you wanted us to improve the cellphone coverage, this is what that means. Do you still want it? And, and we will respect the answer one way or another.
I've got one more.
Okay, Council Sheldon?
One more thing. It should be noted that we were tasked not only to fill the focus groups, but fill it with people from potentially both sides or all sides of the aisle, if you will, on this topic, those who might want it and who might not want it. So we, we didn't call everybody and say, you're, you're going to want cellphone coverage, right? Get on this committee or get on this focus group. We, we put people on this focus group or recommended them for the focus group because we actually value and want to hear from those who don't want it just as much as we want to hear from people who want it. We need to know, we need to know the whole thing.
All right. So if there are no other questions, again, thank you all for coming. You are more than welcome to stay. There are only a few other items, one of which is approving funding for three additional police officers, if that's of interest to you. But you're also welcome to leave at this time, and you won't hurt our feelings. But it's nice to see some faces in the audience, so thank you for coming. Most of the time, we're just talking to ourselves up here.
And I would like to say before you leave that if you feel like you want to reach out to me, do so. I'm, I'm also here and, and happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Okay. The next item is Council Bill Three, Series 2024, amending the 2024 budget and approving a supplemental appropriation in the general fund for additional police officers on second and final reading. Director Farman?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. This is a council bill to amend the city's 2024 budget, and it is being considered on second and final reading this evening. This request stems from the council's retreat just this last March when Chief Lyons presented his departmental priorities and goals and also talked about the staffing levels for the city. And after a careful evaluation, the police department recognizes the need to add specific staff to increase the level of service to the community. City council has always supported the police department and has supported this evaluation and recommendation. So tonight's budget amendment would approve three new police officers to be hired as soon as possible. The amount is 222,400, and that request is for six months of personnel and operating costs for those officers.
And that six months is because it's through the end of the year?
Yes, yes.
Not like we're just going to hire them for six months?
That's true. Here is a summary of the general fund 2024 adopted budget compared to the proposed amended budget. There are no changes from the first reading presentation. With this budget supplemental, the city's 2024 general fund expenditures are well below the revenues. And as the mayor just mentioned, moving forward into the 2025 budget, when, when that is getting to the proposed level for council review, these three positions would be part of that and also part of the long-range financial forecast. Are there any questions about this information?
No, seeing no questions, I would entertain a motion. Oh, wait, Council Eber, turn your mic on.
I do have a question. I'm not sure if it's my.
Mic on.
Thank you. I'm not sure if it's a question now. I, my question is, is, and, and we can choose whether it's part of discussion or whether we can address it now, is that as a result of a hire like this, there was a comment in our packet that our ratio will be higher than most other ratios in communities throughout our area. And while, well, it put me in a little bit of a different situation of, it made me wonder if, while I was with the proposal on hiring the folks because there seems to be a need, but then it looked like we were so much different in our ratio that I just wanted to make sure again that when we're spending money, there's a need that we need to be doing to spend our money. It puts us, I almost want to say more than double the ratio of other communities. And I just want to make sure that that's something we all agree needs to be done and that Chief wants to tell us that, yes, in fact, that even ratios notwithstanding, this is the right thing to be doing.
Thank you. I know the chief has said that. I'll give him the opportunity to reiterate that.
Thank you for the question. I think the very last thing you said, if I could have written that down, I would have repeated it. Do I think that it's the right thing to do? Absolutely. The ratio is higher than the national average. And just keeping in mind, that is just one small piece of the puzzle when looking at a staffing analysis. It's the most easy to understand, which is why I use it, the officer per 1,000 ratio. But really, it's, it's, you know, it is ambiguous at best on, on the entire view of a staffing analysis. Despite being higher than other municipalities, we're also lower than Lone Tree in Greenwood Village, right? So we're not out of the norm on this. It's just that in terms of, of a, a national benchmark, which is two officers per 1,000 people, we are, we will exceed that. But at the same time, you've heard from your constituents, as, as have I, that they demand a higher level of police service in this community, and we have the opportunity to provide that, not in terms of, of creating government fat or waste, but to increase level of service. As you know, I've waited for now two years to make this, this ask. I've spent two years doing that evaluation, and one thing that we've certainly identified is a greater need for investigative capacity. One person investigating all of, all of the reported incidents that occur in our city is not enough, and our solve rate is quite low. And so this really gets at trying to improve level of service. We could maintain the status quo, but then you get status quo service. And we are at a point where, where I think we, there is an opportunity to improve our, our capabilities, and we're going to take full advantage of that should this pass tonight.
I think that's, I think that's an important point, though, that you hit on Chief. At least it's an important point to me, is that we're not adding this staff because our current staff is inadequate. Cherry Hills is a very, very safe community. It is one of the safest communities in Colorado. But there has been concern brought up by our community. And just like we did in the cellphone situation, council listens to its community, listens to its constituents, what do they want? And then when you blend that in, and the chief blends that in, I guess for you to confirm, Chief, that drives this in terms of saying, okay, then this is what I want to do, taking all of that into consideration. But it's not to, it's not because we were inadequate at the time. This is an incredibly safe community, but based on the input from the community that we heard, as well as the investigative aspects and certain other things that you considered, that's why this was proposed, and that's certainly why I'm comfortable, and I believe everybody is, but supporting it. Is that fair?
Thank you. Any other comments? Then I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve, approve Council Bill Three, Series 2024, a bill for ordinance of the city of Cherry Hills Village amending the 2024 budget and approving a supplemental appropriation on second and final reading.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. And that's a roll call vote. The clerk, please call the roll. Council Eber?
Aye.
Council Holm?
Aye.
Council Wheel?
Aye.
Council Sheldon?
Aye.
Council McGuire?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Onto our new business, Resolution Ten, Series 2024, approving and adopting a city council policy on recognizing donors for donations to Quincy Farm. Manager Black?
Good evening again. So before we get into the policy itself, I wanted to provide some background and context for everyone. So as you know, CHLP is fundraising for the Big Barn Project that we're undertaking this year. So they requested a way to recognize major donors for their contributions, and we agreed that that was a great idea. So staff developed this policy for donor recognition at Quincy Farm. It was developed in consultation with the land preserve. So they're very familiar with this document and I think happy with the process that we've come up with. So an overview of the policy, it creates an application process for donors to receive a recognition plaque at the farm. The application will be reviewed by staff and then presented to city council for approval. It is really a mirrored process to the city's existing bench and tree donation programs that we go through regularly. Some highlights, I won't go through the whole policy, but the types of improvements that this is referring to are really major improvements like the Big Barn renovation. This policy doesn't apply to smaller movable items like tables and chairs that might be donated. It's really for major improvements. So in terms of the Big Barn fundraising, what we're really contemplating right now is for each of the four stalls to have a plaque on them, and then a wall plaque that will be shared amongst, I think, six donors is the plan right now. So we anticipate that the land preserve will likely be applying and presenting on behalf of the donors, but individuals can also just apply to the city directly, separately from the land preserve, if they were to choose to do that. So the recommended motion is on the screen, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any, I know this has come up in some conversations before, so this is not the first time we're seeing or have heard about this proposal. Are there any questions or comments? Council Eber?
With regarding the donor recognition policy, it looks like this is a new document. It's in our packet, it says it's a village policy and procedure. So I guess it was authored, I, I, a series of questions. Was this authored by the village in terms of trying to come up with the, this document, or was it a collaborative effort with the land preserve?
There was a very long process to develop this document. So the one that's, the one that's in front of you was primarily developed by city staff and the city attorney's office, and then reviewed together with the land preserve to make sure that it would work for both parties.
Okay. Just to be clear, this is a city policy that will live within the city's policies and procedures.
Correct. I guess there are two questions that I have, and one was within the discussion of the size of the plaques. I want to try and make sure I understand what we're honoring here. If it is a Rob Eber barn door or Rob Eber stall in exchange for X dollars, or is it the Rob Eber entry to the barn or kind of, or is it a funding level of, say, $10,000, get your name on a plaque? Or are they individual placement that we're going to be doing here?
Both options are being considered by the land preserve right now. So we didn't specify within the policy itself to leave flexibility for both this project and any future projects that we're undertaking. But right now, both options are on the table. So for one set donation amount, a family could get their name on a stall, and then for a slightly, or for a different, a lower amount, your name could appear on a plaque with other families or other individuals for just the barn generally. And that would then be similar to the process that we go through, like the plaque that's out in, in the entryway for the Charlo piece that the Art Commission donated. There's something similar to that.
Can I jump in there before I go to whatever your next question is? And I see that that provides more flexibility, which makes sense, but also what it, as I understand it and what you're saying then, is that every one of those, though, is going to come before council. And so while there's flexibility, you know, council would be sitting there going, could, could be going, oh, this one's for this amount and this one's for that amount, and that doesn't, you know, questions could pop up because it would be done on an individual basis. So flexibility in terms of operating, but, you know, questions could, could arise. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
That's correct. Council is going to have the final say over each acceptance.
And that question leads to my next, which is, is there a standard wording? I looked at the application document, and it seemed to say people could, it's, it's more than just Rob Eber and my na, you know, my name in recognition. It could be, Rob Eber loves this stall. Or so, you know, whatever, I'm just making things up. But the, the idea there is that I saw the qualifiers, it can't endorse, it can't have profane language, it can't have, it can't have. But it still seemed a little unclear whether or not somebody's going to write one that ends up in a plaque this big, and somebody's going to write one that ends up in a plaque like this. And, you know, how are we going to be doing that? And, and I guess where I'm going is, it says that the size and type of, of recognition is going to be at the discretion of the, I believe, the city, it said, city staff. And I would kind of go a little bit again towards a more uniform idea of what it is that says, look, these plaques are going to be X size, and so that we all know that we aren't placarding Quincy Farm. And I'll, I'll quickly tell you my story, and that is that last week I had an opportunity to go to Yellowstone Tetons and then up through Big Sky, Montana. And ironically-
How was your cellphone coverage?
My cellphone coverage was pretty darn bad in many places.
Sorry, sorry.
Sorry, it was, it was unlike the Rainier situation. But what it came to me is ironically, of all places, we were in Big Sky, Montana, and I wanted to go see the ski area, and so we're going up there, and we're in the community of Big Sky, and we take a hike. And remember, I, I want to put in that the area in and around Big Sky, Montana is much like the area in and around Cherry Hills Village. It has an area called the Yellowstone Club, which for those who don't know it, it's probably the greatest percentage of wealth maybe in the entire western part of the country, but certainly within Montana. So we're going on this hike, and they let me in, notwithstanding my economic considerations, but the rock at the beginning had, this rock is dedicated by the Yellowstone Club. I went 50 feet down, and this trail marker was donated by this person. And I, and it went for the six miles of the hike going in, and then I saw them coming back out. Every bridge had whoever had funded that bridge, so there were probably 300 little silver bars, Joe and Suzie, Bill and Pete, whatever it was, and saying their love for the great outdoors. Well, by the time I got done looking at all of these, I'm sitting there thinking, what happened to the outdoors? It's covered with plaques. And it really got me thinking about this, that I want to, and I know everybody wants the same thing, that this doesn't turn into my plaque is bigger than yours and my plaque is, you know, in the top three, not the bottom three. And we're not turning the barn and Quincy Farm, which is one of our greatest outdoor natural pieces in a village that prides itself on natural surroundings, into a place that's full of plaques documenting how important everybody is that they gave money. I certainly want to emphasize the importance and my thanks and gratitude for those people who do, but I'm a firm believer in anonymous giving, and I sure wish we could do it that way so that nobody had plaques. But where I'm going is I'd like our, our plaques to be thoughtful, I'd like our plaques to be small, I'd like them to be in taste in keeping with the place that they are going to be located.
And I think that's partial, part of the reason that this policy maintained that flexibility so that, because if we said, for example, everybody who gives X amount of dollars gets a plaque this size, then what happens when you get 50 of those donors and you've made the commitment that you have to put all 50 up? And so I think that this, I mean, how, it's been a year in the making, all, a lot of these considerations, and I think this was the compromise that was reached that still allows, it allows the flexibility to decide sort of on a, not, maybe not even necessarily an individual basis, but maybe a campaign basis. We're going to raise money for the Big- We're going to raise money for the Big Barn and here's how it's going to be structured. And we're going to offer three sponsorships at this level and two at this level. And is everybody okay with that? Great, now go find it. In five years, it might be the pond. You know, in 10 years, it might be something else. And it can be structured differently than for the pond or it can, or whatever these future projects might be. And so I think while I definitely appreciate any concern about, you know, this person gets a six, if somebody came in with a six by eight foot plaque, we just, I'm sure we wouldn't approve that. So, and that's why ultimately the city council does have, and I don't think the land preserve would approve that either.
Well, that was my, my point was going to be, I think, I think we need to leave, leave it to our staff to do things. And in this case, the land preserve, these volunteers, they've got good taste. These are not people who are going to go let a big smattering of different things happen within the, the Big Barn or any other site on the property. So I, this is not a concern of mine. In fact, I would like to make sure we get this approved tonight so that the land preserve can start making good on the $150,000 contribution to match the 600 that we approved at our last budget cycle that we've been asking the land preserve to show up with the money now for a long time. And they're, they're ready to go do it, but they need to have the policy in place. Let's approve this policy.
Yeah, I'm in this, I'm in a very similar place to Dan. But I think there's also been a lot of work saying, okay, if we have $30,000 donors, we're going to do this. If we have 5,000, we're going to do that. And perhaps just getting that in front of the council would take a lot of the confusion out of this, you know, saying, okay, here's the program. And then the donations, as they occur, if we're going to do them one off, there won't be any debate. If they're paying at this level, then they get that. If they, you know, and, and doing that for this 150,000 in the Big Barn, one event, and, you know, we can find our way through in the future as we raise money for ponds or whatever it might be. That'd be my rec, my suggestion, that we, you know, kind of just get the program sketched out, put that in front of us, let us approve it. And then I think all the individual things will be more like cookie cutter.
And I think that's a great use of words, Randy. This is a policy and that's a program. That's the word you, and that's, and we need both. And so I think that that's a good distinction. Rob, did you have?
The final piece that I wanted to mention is, I would like to see a forfeiture provision in the document that says that if you're convicted of a felony, you lose your naming rights and that it shall be taken down. Obviously, people can jump right to immediate events, but really, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about situations where, for instance, the city, the community up in Beaver Creek has a performing arts center that's named after a convicted felon for fraud in fundraising. And there was huge controversy. I don't want us to get in the middle of that controversy. I just think it's easier to say if you are convicted, you know, the donor agrees contractually that if they're convicted of a crime, of a felony crime, that they will lose their right to have a naming event. So I throw that out there for, I agree. I want this approved tonight. I'd like it to go forward. I'd like to have it include the forfeiture provision.
If I could just chime in, those thoughts were actually heavily considered. This is designed to be council's, solely council on behalf of the city, expression of messages of recognition, of gratitude. And as such, council, whether or not you state it and whether or not you attempt to delineate all the different mechanisms or circumstances that might justify or removal of a name, that right exists and it need not be restated in the policy. You can make that determination if the case arises. This is not a contractual right that the city is extending to any particular donor.
I guess my question is, is while the policy is not a contractual right, the application does say the basis upon which somebody's making an application. And it does have language in it that seems to, I, maybe I'm not looking at it properly, but I thought the application actually had some of the language about when it, when it can and cannot be taken away. But I guess my point is-
No, the application just is, that's the, it's just a-
I didn't bring it up right in front of you.
It's really pretty by design.
I would rather it be that it's contractually said that if you're convicted of a malfeasance in a felonious, you know, or moral turpitude, whatever language we want to come up with, but the hard and fast statement so that people are on notice from day one. You screw up, you lose the barn naming. That's where I-
Well, it's really donor recognition. It's not donors, just to be clear on that.
I agree.
So there is no contract.
But you'll only be recognized provided you, you don't screw up.
You can do that now as the policy is written, just for the record.
I think, I think if council is telling us that it doesn't have to be in the policy or this, or this recognition policy, I just think it sounds very harsh to put it in a policy. And if we have the right to remove this, remove the plaque without it being in the policy, I, just to soon go that route. I mean-
Well, it's a transparency issue, right? I mean, the point is, is the council, as the city attorney just said, we can do that anyway. Well, the point is, we're going to tell the donors at the time. So you either, you could put it in the policy or you're going to do it at the time. But the, the issue is, is that I would never vote to say, hey, give me the dough and I'm not going to tell you I can do this later down the road and then do it. I wouldn't do that. I mean, we have the right. That's going to be stated affirmatively at the time. So either A, or it's either going to be stated affirmatively at the time or it isn't. I just said I wouldn't do that. I mean, it's going to be, that would be. And then the question is, do you want to put it in, in the policy or not? I'm fine not putting it in the policy. But the issue is, is that at the time of the donation and the approval, that would be known. The way I look at it, that would be known affirmatively.
I think, though, that we're talking about two different things. One, we're talking about, in your situation, somebody's been convicted of a crime at the time of an application.
No, no.
No, 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 no.
I'm talking about a situation where five years later-
Earl's saying that you would tell somebody when they apply, by the way, if you, because I think where some of this conversation also went was, is it only if they convicted, get convicted of a felony? What other things might someone do that might? You can't conceivably list every scenario where city council might go back and say, you know, maybe what you did wasn't illegal, but it certainly isn't, you know, reflective of the messaging of, you know, hate speech isn't illegal. You may not want that person's name on a barn somewhere. And so I think that this was specifically left so that there, that the city council has the right and the leeway to make those decisions that they feel are appropriate at the time.
I mean, we're going so far as to say, I appreciate the flexibility. I guess my question is, is we're going so far in our policy to say certain things that disqualify you or the message shall not include. To me, it's really simple to add one more that says, at the, you know, an act of moral turpitude, you know, something that's legal is legal. It may be poor form, it may be poor taste, but we all agree that a felony is bad. It's not a misdemeanor, it's a felony. A felony is a bad thing to have. And, you know, I think it comes at the expense, number, two things. It puts you on notice that you're going to do it. Okay, maybe we're all going to talk about it. But, you know, we're all going to talk about it and say, well, you know, we can take this away for anything that we decide later on that we don't like about you. Well, then I'm not going to give the money, I mean. Or you turn around and you say, look, at least I know that the only way I'd lose my naming rights is if it's a felony and I'm on notice. Don't do a felony and get convicted of it.
But we're saying it might not be the only way you can lose your naming rights.
Exactly. We, we used phrases like moral turpitude and other things a moment, a while back. So I, I think if I have a felony conviction against me, I got bigger problems than a little brass plaque.
Well, but the people of Beaver Creek did not do something. And now they have the Vilar Community, you know, Performance Center that they sure wish they didn't have. I'll just say that.
Well, I think that that also, they probably did have some sort of contract. We won't have contracts with every one of, there is no contract. This is a, we are, they're making a donation and we, in response, are saying, thank you so much. We'd like to recognize you with a plaque. There is no quid pro quo. If you give us this, we will give you that. It's entirely up to the city. And that's why it was crafted that way. It's entirely up to the city whether we choose to recognize it. And this caused, caused a lot of concern in dealing with the land preserve because, to your point, there is some element of, well, you told me you were going to put my name on a plaque and, but now you're not really promising to do that. At some point, there needs to be a level of, of trust. You give the money and we recognize the people that, in ways that we feel are appropriate.
And I guess maybe I wasn't, maybe I was unclear, but I don't have a problem with the original expression of gratitude. For those people who are kind and nice enough to provide a donation, I have no problem at all thanking them for that. But with that comes a visible tangential piece of city property that now has a name on it or a saying on it, whatever it is, that I believe the person forfeits at the time they are convicted of a felony.
And you could absolutely do that if and when that ever occurred. You could come to city and, the city and say, we no longer should recognize this person.
And then it's up for discussion. I guess what I was trying to do was have it done upfront with the word shall, because then it's a command, that says, look, you commit a felony, the plaque comes down. That's all I'm trying to say.
Here, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, okay.
I move to approve Resolution Ten, Series 2024, approving and adopting a city council policy recognizing donors for donations to Quincy Farm.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I know that there are some, I think, voices have been heard. I don't know that we'll come to unanimous agreement on this, but I want to, that's a legitimate and valid concern. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstention.
And one abstention. Okay, that passes. Thank you for that discussion. For city reports, I don't have much new to report. The Metro Mayor's Caucus is meeting tomorrow morning. So I will turn it over to Counsel McGuire.
I am reporting that my microphone was not on when I said I have nothing to report.
I have two quick things. Jim, thank you very much for the cellphone update. I know you scrambled around to get some of that data together today fairly quickly in response to finding out that we were going to have some folks here tonight. And I think that was great. And it's, it's going to take that kind of communication on a go-forward basis to keep, keep that kind of citizen dialogue going. So thank you for that. Chief, I should have mentioned this when we were talking about the new staffing. Thank you, thank you again. I didn't say it then, but I want to, I think I did say it at first reading, but I want to thank you again for coming to council with this request because I think it is indicative of what we've told you now since you came on board here. We've told you, come to us when you need something. And so thank you for bringing that request to us and I'm glad we're able to fulfill it. And I think our community, once we are able to go get that word out, all of us, once we're able to start spreading that word that there's, that's going to equal new officers on the street here in, in, you know, a few short weeks or maybe a couple months getting through recruiting and training and whatnot. I think our citizens are going to be very happy about that. So thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Counsel Eber?
Two quick things. One, I did want to take a moment. I don't do it enough. I wanted to thank all the staff, you, every day and every way. You guys make it really easy for all of us here on council. So I wanted to extend my thanks. I don't want to signal out anybody in particular, but collectively, you guys make at least my job of being a council person very, very easy. And I wanted to make sure that you all know that. Secondly, tomorrow night, I'm going to attend another one of the airport noise meetings in hopes that something meaningful will be said that I can bring back to us for the next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Holland?
No report.
No Dr. Cog meetings since we last were together and everybody is happy in District One, so no report.
City manager, we'll start with you.
Yes, just to note that next week is the PTRC meeting as well as the PNC meeting. And both of those will have a presentation by Mr. Blakely. And so if the public wants to attend those meetings and hear an update on cellular information, it's a great time to attend. And other than that, you have two more meetings which to use and abuse me, so I'm, I'm here for that. Thank you.
City attorney? Director Farman?
The city participates in the Government Finance Officers Association, and that's of United States and Canada. We participate in their award program for, it's a certificate of excellent program for the budget award. And we just found out this week, we did receive the budget award again this year. We've applied and received the award the last several years. What is extra exciting is we submitted our online budget document and received the award for that and also had special recognition on the long-range financial forecasting. So a bit of really good news there.
Awesome. City clerk? Nope. Manager Black? Chief?
Thank you again. I appreciate the, the consideration for the budget amendment this evening. The good news is tomorrow morning, I will be extending three conditional offers of employment to three new police officers. Those folks have already been identified and are through the majority of the vetting process. The hire date will be July 15th and July, preceding the July 16th city council meeting will be a swearing-in ceremony for the three new officers, plus Officer Ives, who has been selected as our canine handler, and Tuco will be our very first swearing-in of our new canine. So he's going to try. We're working on, as, just baby steps. But there will be an invitation sent out to you with the exact time of day, but it should be on the 16th preceding our, our regular scheduled council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Golding?
You guys have kept Jim too busy during the meeting, so I'll give you the update. We just received word that we, if our residents approve our cell tower plan, we have a letter of interest from a third carrier at this point. That's all I have.
Three out of four, not bad.